Welcome to Ridgewood Talks. Through this podcast, we'll be introducing you to some of the leaders and legends in our village. We'll keep you updated about fascinating local events and we'll dig into the town's hot topics and so much more. But first, let me introduce myself. I'm Jeannie Johnson, the founder of Ridgewood Talks and Ridgewood Walks. The goal of these initiatives is to create a kinder, more connected and a more vibrant community. I'm thrilled to be co-hosting this podcast with my good friend and all-around wonderful guy, Jordan Kaufman. We look forward to meeting with you weekly and we look forward to hearing your thoughts on who and what you'd like to learn about in our beautiful hometown. Enjoy this episode and until we meet again, be kind and do good. Hey, everybody. Thanks so much for tuning into Ridgewood Talks again. This is our fourth episode with our new co-host, Jordan Kaufman. And today we have a really special guest. Our has been on this program, I think, two or three times before, and he is always a wealth of information for our community. And so, Jordan, I'm going to let you introduce our next guest. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Jeannie. We are pleased and honored to have our guest Ramon Hashay on, the Burton County Commissioner. Ramon was previously on the Village Council here in Ridgewood, starting in 2016, and became the mayor of 2018, which he was the mayor when COVID first hit. And that's something we hope to get a little bit into as we go through this interview and talk about some of the things that he did then. Ramon's done a ton. If you look at Ramon's volunteer work and what he's done for the community and how he served, it is an absolute mouthful. Just to mention a couple, Ramon served on the Planning Board, Parks and Rec Committee, Fields Committee. He was the Chair of the CBDAC. He was Liaison to the Board of Ed. He does all of this and way more if you include coaching sports and everything else he does with Knights of Columbus and all that. He also has six kids at home, which he raises, and they're all great kids. So he just has a complete pile of things that he somehow manages to accomplish in the 24 hours a day and seven days a week. That is just unbelievable. I remember Ramon, Ramon and I both went to RHS. Seeing Ramon afterwards, when I moved back to town, I'd see Ramon commuting on the train. He was always the tall, really well-dressed guy, networking in the vestibules and talking to everyone. And then to see him come on the council and become Mayor of the town, it was just incredible. And watching his career as it advances is just really a pleasure to watch. So Ramon, thank you so much for coming on the show today.
Thank you, Jordan. Thank you, Jeannie. Thank you for having me.
Well, to kick it off, first thing we're going to do is we're just going to give, we want you to give us a brief overview of what your new position is. What do you do as a county commissioner?
Right. So the Board of County Commissioners works very similar to the way that the Village Council works for municipality. We're basically the legislators.
Jordan, what have you got on tap?
Really, I'm looking forward to hearing some of the answers that Ramon has. So I'm ready to jump right in and just start talking about it. Ramon and I have worked together on the CBDAC for three years or so. So that's one of the places where I've had a lot of interaction and conversations with him. I know he has a lot to add on that front. And one of the specific things, which is really unique, is what happened when COVID struck. And we made a lot of changes very quickly to adapt to the environment, people not commuting, how to deal with parking situations and some of the other things. So I think it's appropriate to start with just letting Ramon talk a little bit about what those moments were like, being in such a decision-making moment where there wasn't a lot of clarity. Everyone had blurred vision about what was going to happen. And you made a lot of great decisions, which I think, as much as we're sick of talking about COVID, I really think that some of those things and some of those choices proved out to be kind of hero status. So with that, Ramon, I'll let you just talk a little bit about when you first got those calls, changes first started to happen, and what was happening in your office and in your mind.
Yeah, no, it was definitely a very challenging time. I remember the first recorded case of COVID, confirmed case in Bergen County, was on March 12 of 2020. How do you deal with a pandemic? There was no playbook on what to do. I remember the night before, you know, on the night of the 12, being on the phone with the Superintendent of Schools and the Health Director for the Village to discuss shutting down the schools the next day. And even then, it was just sort of trying to figure out what were the pieces in government that were able to make these types of decisions. There was already a lot of confusion. That same night, and it was communicated in the following day, the county executive had made the decision to shut down the schools. And so therein started the shutdown due to COVID. There was really, like I said before, no way, there was no instructional on how to, how to communicate. And there was so much uncertainty and there was so much just lack of information and confusion and fear most of us. And I said, well, we got something big in our hands here. I just want to make sure that the communication is out there and it's consistent and it's clear. And it has to be, you know, rhythmic. You know, people have to be able to rely on the information from government in order to avoid panic and fear from setting in. To me, it was so, I think, clear that we had to communicate as much as possible, because if we didn't, then the rumor mill starts to set in and misinformation starts to fly out. So I felt that by having that very constant, you know, the high volume of communications really gave people peace of mind, you know, gave our residents peace of mind, knowing that there's somebody looking at all this stuff. I don't have to worry about it. I don't have to figure out what's going on. There's somebody out there who's having these conversations and is bringing me the most up-to-date information so that I know that things aren't as bad as I might hear from somebody else. And I think if anything, one of the things that all that communication managed to accomplish was to have a much calmer, I think, population. I think our residents were very calm. You know, I would, I would put out all the information that I felt was relevant. At the same time, every day, we would have, you know, the number of cases, you know, what was happening? What were the executive orders? Where can you find the full order? Here's a recap of them, but if you want more information, it's here. I think that the Village website was obviously a place where people could naturally go. There wasn't a lot of information on there. We were populating it. That's good. And then there was social media. I think that was a powerful platform that people, you know, can, we can communicate to. But there was a segment of the population, older adults, that were not engaging in, you know, on social media. They wouldn't think to go on the Village website. And I remember being in the car and my wife was sitting next to me and says, hey, don't we have older folks watching public access channel? Maybe we can do a PowerPoint slideshow on public access and just have that information running 24/7, just flipping through.
Thank you so much, because I don't know a single soul who would say that you over-communicated. I want to thank you on behalf of all of the people that are in my network, because we were very grateful for all of the work that you did and the communication that you provided for us. And really, you really were that leader that we needed during that time, and I'm incredibly, incredibly grateful. I'm also really grateful to you for helping to keep the businesses in our Central Business District afloat during that time.
There were a lot, there was a lot of fear, as I mentioned before. There was fear, health concerns, fear from our business owners who really didn't see how they could reopen. When were these shutdowns going to end? And if they ended, what would that mean for their businesses when it was time to reopen? I remember being in contact with, you know, the folks in the Chamber of Commerce, you know, constantly trying to figure out what are the things that we needed to do. And this is when the whole, you know, trunk delivery thing came about and, you know, turning off the parking meters and giving the businesses the opportunity to be able to have pickup and drop-off zones in front of their businesses. There were a lot of things that were happening, you know, at once. At the same time, you know, there was this tremendous sense of solidarity and volunteerism. A lot of people wanted to volunteer time and money and talent. And that's one of the reasons why, you know, Feed the Front Lines, which you're intimately involved with, Jeannie, you know, that's how that came about. It was people that had money in their pocket or had time to give or talents to give, and we were able to pull that together. If you recall, there was the Big Olicious Fire, and there were some families that were, you know, displaced. We lived with a family of all males, adults, and they needed clothing donations. And I remember having local folks volunteering, hey, you know, we'll, we'll collect clothes. And then my dry cleaner called me, and she's great. She's one of the youngest business owners in town. She said, hey, when people drop off the clothes, have them drop it off here. That way I can dry clean them and fold them so that we give it to them with dignity. It's not just put in some plastic bag, you know, drop it on the doorstep. So there was all this tremendous, I mean, the Ridge community is so generous. I remember one of the gentlemen, who was like the patriarch of the group, the family of men who were living in the second floor of Big Olicious. By the way, also needed help in getting down payment for an apartment and a new, you know, lease. And the same person who has so generously, you know, offered to donate the rooms for two weeks, also helped with the down payment to get the apartment. I remember I was talking to the gentleman, and he was in tears on the phone, you know, and he said, you know, I never imagined that this community was this kind and generous. Never imagined in a million years that there was this level of generosity and compassion.
We do have an amazing community, and I can tell you that, you know, it was beautiful to witness all of the volunteers that stepped up for the Feed the Front Line, Helping Those in Need program. I just want to jump in on that a little to clarify for anyone who is interested in knowing more about that program. I believe you and Scott Leaf, the president at the time, the president of the Chamber of Ridgewood, came with the idea of collecting donations so you could pay the restaurants to provide meals for frontline workers and those in need. And then as the program grew, it was made aware through gentlemen in town, Sean McCuey, that there were grants available through the New Jersey Economic Development Authority. And so with that, the group of people that were the founders, the original founders of Feed the Front Lines, pulled our resources together and applied for a grant. Stacy Anteen from Health Barn USA, the foundation, Paul Vagianos, who is now Councilman, Paul Vagianos, Joan Groom, who was the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce, myself, you and Scott. We kind of pulled that thing together and managed to get, at this point now, Feed the Front Lines has received over $4 million in New Jersey Economic Development Authority funding. And all of that money has gone, been poured into the Ridgewood Central Business District at 15. There's anywhere between 15 and 21 restaurants that are involved in the program, and they provide hot nutritious meals for, again, those 100,000 people throughout Northern Bergen County, who are through all of Bergen County for that matter, who are in need of some hot meals and food. And so that has been a wildly successful program for the economic viability of our downtown. As you mentioned, very, very, very proud of our community for the outpouring of volunteerism, where these meals are picked up every day. Bravo to you for bringing that to our community. And also, you know, let's just go into this next step of, you know, what other things, of course, we all know that you and I were involved with the Pedestrian Plaza and had that idea.
When, now getting into the spring of 2020, and there was some lifting of the restrictions. Some of these executive orders were going to be lifted, and it was being contemplated that restaurants could reopen at 25% capacity. So, you know, in anticipation of the eventual reopening of our downtown, I said, look, I need to put together a team of folks that are going to help me, you know, guide the decisions that we need to make in order to make sure that we can provide an environment that's, that will help our businesses, you know, reopen and thrive, right, succeed. And so I put together a think tank of local, you know, leaders from the business community, from, you know, retail, real estate, residents. And we sat together and just, you know, brainstormed ideas of what needed to happen. And what really floated to the top of all the ideas was the concept of, you know, the one thing that businesses will be lacking is store space, right? Brick and mortar. They're not going to be able to have the capacity. The restaurant at 25% capacity isn't going to make money. It's actually going to lose money if you reopen at 25% capacity because of the overhead that is required. And so we thought also, well, then what's the busiest time for these restaurants and for retailers? We had the busiest times for our businesses is in the weekend. So we came up with the idea and they said, you know, necessity is the mother of all invention, you know, for years. And I know you were certainly one of the people who were suggesting this, Jeannie. People were saying, why do we close down the downtown during the weekends, you know, make it into pedestrian mall? People can, you know, can walk around and music, and we see this in other cities that, you know, that do this year-round because of the way that they're set up. And the answer was always, well, it was too complicated. It was too hard to divert the buses, you know, the cost of doing this. It just, unless it was a permanent outdoor plaza, which wasn't going to be, you know, feasible, it was just too hard to do on the weekends. But again, once we were faced with the situation of having to figure out and be creative, determined that was the best thing to do was to give these businesses the outdoor space that they were now lacking indoors, give it to them outdoors, right? The Village of Ridgewood, having, you know, the, the control of the roads, could provide that much-needed outdoor space to these businesses. So then the next conversation was, take this idea to Village employees, the staff. And, and I thought, well, if I pose it as a question, can we do it? It's probably not going to be the answer that I want to hear. So it's, how do we do it was the question. And, and we put it on, you know, on police fire engineering signal to figure out how we got it done. It wasn't a matter of can we, it was a matter of how, because we needed it. Without that, our business would not have been able to survive. And that's when the idea came, came about. It came from that, that group, you know. I'm perfectly comfortable in admitting when, when I don't have all the ideas, I've never operated a retail business in town or a restaurant. I don't know what that's like. So for me to figure out what those guys need, I needed to bring them into the conversation to make that happen.
That was brilliant.
You know, it wasn't about what I thought was, would make sense. I mean, I happen to agree with what they, what they proposed. But how could I not? Absolutely. And they're the ones who live this reality and their livelihood depended on it, you know. I didn't have that context.
So let's go for a little bit and help our listeners understand that the concept of the Pedestrian Plaza was born out of that. You were the one that brought it to the Village employees and said, look, we're going to do this. We're going to do it in the best way possible. Here are the expenses that are involved in it. We had somebody that was willing to ante up the initial funding to do that project, where we could bring in our Public Works people and we could close down the streets and we could put those barricades up. But to keep them up, the restaurants donated the money to provide the workers from the village to do that. So it did not cost a dime to the village. Some people don't understand how that, that has all come about. And before I close on that topic, and I'll let you elaborate as you wish, but for me, I again, want to thank you for your leadership, because I do credit those two initiatives especially for really getting our community through that horrific time. Number one, it gave the Feed the Front Lines, Helping Those in Need program, again, rallied volunteers. And then the Pedestrian Plaza gave us a place to experience joy, to experience connection, even though we were, you know, imposed, the six-foot radius was imposed upon us, we were able to be together. And I remember walking down, you know, Paul and I would be out there, six o'clock in the morning, and we'd be getting ready. And, you know, we just look at each other and think, gosh, you know, we hope that this works out. And then at six o'clock at night, we'd walk down the street and we'd look and we'd say, oh my gosh, look at how many people are here. And then for me, the next breath was, oh my gosh, look at how many people. You know, I was a little afraid, but, you know, the concerts in the park, the fact that you gave your thumbs up for that and the fact that the village jumped on board, let's do it. Let me tell you something, that was the greatest joy, I think, that I've seen. And it was so amazing to see that much joy during such panic-stricken time in our society. So thank you for that. I really, really appreciate all your efforts for that. And, you know, hopefully, we can, that type of thing will come back and it will prevail, and we can continue on having those beautiful weekends.
Yeah, you, you mentioned the, the cost. So the cost to close down for the weekends, about $8,000. And we had a very generous member of the community who donated the first five weekends and said, look, here's the money to make it happen for the first five weekends. Let's give these businesses a chance to make the money so that later on, they can contribute to keep this thing going. And that's what it was, you know. It really didn't cost the Village of Ridgewood any money. You know, there was nobody coming into the downtown at that time anyway. So any of the parking spots that were off limits now to, to folks who were coming to the downtown, we have plenty of parking in other areas of town, which is great, because those businesses that were outside of the pedestrian mall, now have a lot of folks, they have foot traffic, because they were parking by their businesses and walking by, which probably wouldn't have happened without it. And we were then, you know, filling up the parking garage, which had just been, you know, been, been open. So it really gave us an opportunity, you know, created opportunities for us. And, you know, it's funny, because we had two towns that are always known for being very progressive and very pro-business. We had Westfield and Montclair, you know, inquiring about what we did and how we did it. And, you know, they went on to, to adopt it and keep it, and it's worked out tremendously well for them. And other, many other towns have done it throughout, as I mentioned, I'm not suggesting that we were unique in that sense. But I know that people were looking to us, because we were one of the first to come up with the idea in New Jersey. They run with it and have done, is done really well for them. We've shut it down, and, you know, when I looked at the vibrancy of the downtown this past summer, compared to last year in 2020, it shouldn't be that we were less vibrant in 2022 than we were in 21 and 20. You know, foot traffic, people always talk about parking. Foot traffic is the lifeblood of a business district. You know, New York City has very little parking, but has tons of foot traffic. And those businesses do really well, retailers in New York City do really well. They can afford to pay very high rents because of the foot traffic. The lack of parking has never stopped me from going shopping in New York City. So, you know, it really created some opportunities for us, and I think we, if we don't capitalize on those opportunities, we're leaving a lot on the table.
I think that was certainly one of the things that not only did it have a huge impact, it was easily seen from all the residents living in town. You didn't need to get a mailer that said, hey, by the way, we're doing something cool downtown. All you had to do was dare to leave your house and see the middle of town. You saw the vibrancy. So definitely it was something that didn't need to be over-communicated, but was certainly talked about a lot. As, as we talk about that, Ramon, I think it's important also, that was kind of stuff that's happened in the past, right? And here we are, and we just have this new master plan come out and get approved. And the master plan has a lot of material in it. It's a very voluminous document, if you will. And what are some of the things, as you look at that master plan, where do you prioritize some of those issues? And how do you think the town, because you talked about a management style of asking how, not can? Not only the things that you prioritize, but how would you suggest the town go about accomplishing them?
Yeah, no question, the master plan is a very large document. But I think if you wanted to prioritize all those items and how they're listed, you go back to your visioning process, right? The whole visioning process was when we took input from members of the community. They would come in and do these roundtables, and they would come out with a list of their priorities, of what they felt was most important for the community, to guide our community going forward. There were three things that always floated to the top out of those discussions. No matter what the composition of the groups were, the demographic, didn't matter. There was three things that always came up. One was the downtown. Another one was aging in place, which included not only age-friendly initiatives, but, you know, housing options in town. And the third was the environment, right? The green initiatives, the tree canopy. So those are the three things that always, always floated to the top as the top priorities in those discussions. I think you start there. I think you start with those three. It drives a lot of the other things that, that the community needs and wants. And it's, it's really incumbent upon the village to, to really take that input seriously. Because, you know, if you, if you're asking, if you're truly asking for the input from the community of what they want, and they have already prioritized to you, you know, at least three things, that's where you start. That's, that's the focus. That's not, you know, that can't be an arbitrary decision. I think it has to be consistent with what people have told you they want.
Right. I think as, as we've had conversations past that, we've also heard citizen safety as another thing that's pretty up on the list.
Yep.
And as we've looked at it, another thing that I think we've talked about for years and years and years is some of the zoning rules and things like that, which, as you look through the master plan, it's pretty cool. They have the summary, Cliff Notes in the back, where it talks about money and time and energy, like all, all the benefits and costs of trying to get these accomplished. And some of the rules regarding how to rethink zoning and how to rethink those things are all very little dollar signs and very little money signs. And it's just about taking the initiative. Do you think that's also something that we can do concurrently along with some of the other initiatives, which are going to be bigger, take more time to implement or have more planning around? Do you think all of that should happen at once, or do you think it's hit one at a time and cross the finish line and then move on to the next?
You know, people always talk about the, how slowly the wheels of government move. And part of that, the pace of that speed and why it's so slow, it's because of the funding question, right? Yes, you want to do a million things, but if you have to pay for it, now you have to figure out, how do you fund it? How do you incorporate that into a budget? So if you, if we have any things on that list of priorities that don't cost a thing, I think it's a no-brainer. I mean, that's, that's stuff that we need to, assuming that we have the resources and, and, you know, manpower to do it. But those are the things that really, if they don't cost you anything, they shouldn't be delayed by any, any budgeting process, right? It's just, you know, good planning from, from within. So absolutely, you know, we don't have to wait for, for those things to happen.
Yeah. No, I think you're right, and that's something worth highlighting. Speaking of budgeting and big projects, we just finished up a project in the Duck Pond, which is county-owned. One of the big things I always learned is listening to the debates and things like that is all the things I know. So that was something that I believe you were involved with, and I think there was a big push by the residents. Can you talk a little bit about what was successful about that initiative and how that kind of got off the ground and, and we got it to the finish line?
Yeah. So for years, the Duck Pond was, you know, was not looking its best, and people are always concerned. I think a lot of, a lot of folks automatically, because of the location, think that the Duck Pond is a municipal park, you know, but it is a county park. But Parks and Recreation were getting a lot of complaints from people about the condition of the park. And so that was a discussion that we had when I served as Council Liaison to Parks and Recreation. So I reached out to the county, knowing there was a county park, to see what the plans were for, for the design. Luckily for us, the county had just completed, it was in the process of completing, it's the reviewing, it's 2019 master plan for parks. People don't know, but Bergen County has over 9,000 acres of parks and open spaces. So it's large enough that, that, you know, it warrants a, an actual separate master plan for, for these facilities. And in my discussions with the, with the Parks Director, you know, he couldn't have been any nicer. He, you know, we, we went over why the pond looked the way it did. There was a big project done years ago, and unfortunately, the engineering for that project ended up not taking into account the, the drop in the, in the, the level of water in the aquifers, that it's way down. So we were only, not only looking at the engineering project for relining and filling the pond, but then that gave us the opportunity to look at, well, if we're going to do this work, what are some of the things that we could do, right? So the county was already looking at the native species that we can, you know, that can put back some of that. We can look at reconfiguring some of the paths and extending them, because that trail kind of died at the Duck Pond, kind of just looped around. So they extended the bike path to go even further. So there are a lot of things that were happening in the project. It started off as a very small, basic need. The scope continued to widen as, as the Parks Department was trying to figure out what were some of the, the other investments that we can make in the park. So the budget started to grow. So it started off, you know, under a million dollars, and it continued to grow from there. So, you know, and, and every, every couple, you know, every few weeks, I would call the Parks Director and the county and, you know, kind of jokingly, hey, what's going on? When are you guys doing this? And eventually it got to the point when it came time that I was now a candidate for, for Freeholder. I said, hey, you know, jokingly, I'm coming. So why are we going to do this project, huh? So anyway, but they, you know, they were wonderful, and it's, it's again, another indication of just the amount of resources that the county has, the specialization for, you know, these types of projects the county has. We have a tremendous staff to really be very thoughtful in how we carry out these projects. And, you know, the pond looks great, and we, we now have moved on to also other projects that, that were still, that were, you know, continuing to be doing the works. We wanted to expand on pickleball, for example, right? It's the fastest-growing sport for folks 55 and over. We're adding new facilities, and then we're also improving existing ones. And we want to be thoughtful as well in creating some of these facilities that, that will have lighting so that folks can play at night as well. That is not just a day sport, maybe give people who have been working during the day the opportunity to have this active recreation in the evening as well.
Yeah, makes a lot of sense. Certainly, the fastest-growing also has a lot of celebrity investment going on. I don't know if you saw Tom Brady bought a pickleball team. Taking a step back, because you have a very unique view in the fact that you grew up in the town, and you're now raising your family in the town. And as we look back, as someone who's lived in the town for many, many decades, what are some of the things that you think have been huge improvements or changes that you've watched and seen? You know, we both grew up when there was a Woolworths and a Seal Fonz in, in Ridgewood. And what are some of the things that, as we look back, some of the things that maybe Ridgewood missed that some other towns had that's really helped them kind of flourish a little bit more? Just kind of weighing the two amazing things that we've done over that, you know, 30, 40 years, along with some of the misses maybe that, that we could have done that would have gotten us to level up?
Yeah, I think, I think we had some significant misses when it comes to, to the downtown, you know, and any investment in the downtown. You know, for as prominent as, as the downtown is and well-known it is in the area, the, the, the contribution of, of the property taxes paid by commercial properties in town is very low. It's barely double digits in Ridgewood. You know, when you think of a downtown, that's, that's so crucial, right, to, for, for the area. So we, that contribution could have been easily now, you know, 15, 20%. But I think that there was a delay in some of the investments that had to be made to, to, to make the downtown more viable. And I'll use Morristown as an example. If you look back in 1985, Morristown, in 1995, sorry, Morristown and Ridgewood were about the same. They were, you know, the commercial rents were about the same, about $30, $35 a square foot. But Morristown decided to embark on, on creating more parking for the downtown, and they did. And they went on to build some, some pretty significant structures. If you fast forward from that 25 years later. If you fast forward from that 25 years later, uh, the rents in, in Ridgewood were about the same, 30 to $35 a square foot. The commercial rents in Morris Town were, were almost double, about $60 to $65 a foot. So there was a, a, I think, a huge miss opportunity in creating some of that, what I think is this basic infrastructure for, for, for the downtown. Obviously, we've turned the page. I think now we've made the investment, you know, the timing of, of the investment. Uh, nobody could have predicted that we were going to be hit by a global pandemic. At the time that we did, that people weren't going to be commuting. Ridgewood is a commuting town. How, how could people not commute into the city anymore? Um, so I think that we, we have an opportunity now to, and, and, and that just really shows more flexibility. I think that, you know, the, the, what's going to bring the new, the next opportunities for the downtown is our flexibility. How flexible are we in adapting to create the, the, the environments and, and, and situations that, that will help our businesses, you know, thrive and do better? Uh, we know, one of the things that we did when I was on the council, we expanded the, uh, the parking passes, the commuter passes so that, uh, commercial property owners in the downtown could also purchase passes. Because we always thought of a commuter as somebody who got into the train station at Ridgewood and went into the city. We never thought about the fact that there's people who commute into Ridgewood because they have businesses here. Uh, you know, why shouldn't they have access to a parking spot? Um, you know, municipal spot, uh, yearly pass to park when they come into work, right? As opposed to them, us chasing them around all day because they have no other option but to park on the street, right? We, we were creating our own problem and then coming after the, you know, the folks for, for having to deal with the, you know, but the problem that we had created. So I think that opened things up, you know, the fact that we also, uh, decided to allow anyone parking at the train station who comes in at the 12 o'clock, if there are any open spots, take the spots, pay the meter, but the spots are open, no longer just required for, um, parking, um, commuter pack, uh, uh, pass holders. So that was, that was huge because if you haven't gone into the city by 12 o'clock, was the thinking, then you probably aren't going to go the rest of the day. So it opened things up as well. And I think being flexible and being creative is really going to bring the, the next set of opportunities and, and ensure that we're not, you know, giving away opportunities to other, to other towns.
No, that's a great point. I think one of the, one of the things that we'd like to close on as we, you know, you've been very generous with your time. So thank you so much. Obviously you have so much knowledge to, uh, to give and, and so much history to reflect on. But one of the things as we look forward is thinking about how residents and volunteers can impact and engage with the community, whether it be at the Ridgewood level or county level. So if you could help with a little bit of advice to some of our listeners, if they want to get involved there, have the biggest impact, have the biggest splash, what are the, some of the ways that you might direct them to have that impact they might be looking to have?
Look, I think the biggest impact and, and, and people don't understand how much power they have is voting. You know, that we have municipal elections in Ridgewood every two years. You know, you're, you're getting a, a read on what's happening. Are you happy with the way that, that, that the town, the direction of the town is going? So, so, you know, the best thing that you can do is, is, is vote, you know? Vote for those candidates who are going to support the things that you want to see. I think that's the most basic way to do it. It doesn't require a lot of time. It's, it's maybe, you know, 15 minutes, uh, you know, every two years and, uh, second Tuesday of November. Not a lot of time. So that's the most basic way that, that, that you can do that, you know? And, and I know that we had, uh, we had a, you know, debate recently for some of the candidates for council this year. You know, three very important issues that, that Ridgewood has to address. One is the, the, the health and vibrancy of the downtown. Uh, the other is the infrastructure, the condition of our roads. There, there, I mean, anybody knows, I mean, I, I, you know, driving in a car with Uber driver, Uber driver making, making the joke that you know you're in Ridgewood when the car starts to shake. I mean, that is not the, you know, we shouldn't be the, uh, the, uh, butt end of the jokes for, for that type of stuff. We're, you know, we're better than that. And then the other thing that we also need to look at is, you know, flooding and the impact that it's having on a community that's very active in youth sport. You know, I have to schedule a practice now because I, I'm not going to, you know, make my kids suffer through Halloween football practice. So we need to find a way, for example, to, to reschedule that. There is no other day that we can fit because our fields are just booked to the, to, to the max. So we have to pay out of pocket to go rent a facility in Waldorf. Shouldn't be the case, right? We, we need to have more, more options for recreational facilities in town as well. Uh, and then you can get involved by getting involved in, in committees, right? The, you know, the Fields Committee, uh, it's, it's a very important one. That's, uh, uh, you know, Parks and Recreation, you know, Parks and Recreation Department is probably the department that has the most interaction with our residents in town. Uh, you know, volunteer, you know, tho- those are the things that can give you a seat at the table in terms of, you know, helping the, uh, the Village of Ridgewood be able to, to guide some of the decisions. You, you know, we forget that as council people, you know, we are elected not because we're subject matter experts on stuff, you know? We, 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 we don't, you know, e- everyone's elected at large. No one's elected to represent, uh, particularly the, the school community, the business community, or, you know, the bankers in town, everyone is elected at large. And you have to be very humble and, and understanding that you, you're not up there because you're a subject matter expert on all things. You're got, you're there because you got more votes than the other candidate. And I think that for, for the council to be able to make very well-informed decisions, we need, we rely on the input from our, you know, committee members and the volunteers that give up their time, just as council people do, they're, they're volunteering their times, you know? For the, the stipends that, that you're paid as a, as a council member, i- it's essentially a volunteer position. You're not, you're not getting rich of, of, of doing that. So yeah, those are the ways that, uh, that I would say, you know, vote and go and volunteer.
Ramon, I want to thank you so much for your volunteerism, um, at the council level. Everything that you do for our community, we are incredibly grateful for your leadership, especially like we said before, through the COVID pandemic, it was stellar. Congratulations on your new appointment to the county commissioner's office. And Jordan, what else have you got to say?
I think everything has been said. Ramon, it's been absolute pleasure. Always learn so much talking with you. Thanks so much for coming on and being a guest.
Thank you both. Thank you. Thank you for doing this. This is great. Um, we can't have enough communication to, uh, to get people informed about what's happening in the community. So thank you for this.
Thank you so much. All right, listeners, uh, stay tuned for our next episode. We're going to be talking to Deputy Mayor Pamela Perrin. And, uh, we're going to be talking about some of the, uh, Ridgewood water issues. I know that flyer went out to all of the residents of Ridgewood Water Company. And, um, you know, there are a lot of concerns, so she's going to help put some of that to rest. We're hoping to have, um, Rich Calby, who is the head of the water, uh, Ridgewood Water, uh, join us that day. So stay tuned for that and thanks so much. Don't forget to vote, everybody. Voting day is on Tuesday, November the 8th. If you need to know where your poll is, go ahead, look at the, again, the Village of Ridgewood website or you can go to League of Women Voters, find out where your polling place is and get out there. So hasta la vista, until we meet again, everyone. Thank you so much.